Ms. Pierce, can you let him know that his mic is needed?
I'll be speaking into the other mic. Can you hear me?
I can hear you very well, Commissioner Pierce.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
At this time, to the special recognition of EMS staff, cardiac saves in June and July. Thank you all so much for having us. This is a great honor to play when we do a good night to speak. Take the opportunity to recognize all the hard work you've done. That's your support, your best. So the first call happened on April the sixth, two thousand twenty five. The last, the last, oh. About eleven thirty at one, called emergency dispatch. On the other end was an angel. First angel on the scene. So the telecommunicators are saying they double get that. No, they don't. They see the ground, the air, the person. The telecommunicators are open, preparing, finding, sending, somebody going to. So at eleven thirty, she received the call, dispatched it out. And I know. Dispatched. If they didn't sign. Special recognition, believe, that you have to keep your job, your goal, whatever they need from the cat, to see the light. Get down, you all got the questions, you told us, thank you. Especially when they came to. That last person. So about eleven forty five, I'm. First provider they come on scene was Andy Wright. And it was a fit, they were riding the truck together. A second EMS unit that came in was Derek Hall, we James Frank. And Reese Simmons. Get your real quick rundown. A real quick rundown, so they performed CPR, this gentleman, Wise Community, for nineteen minutes. They put him in EMS unit, they were taking him to Robram, which is our closest facility. The patient come to on the way to the hospital and actually tried to jerk his innovation to that. He actually, they excavated him, and he tried to talk to them on the way to Robram. He spent less than a week at Duke in cardiac care, he was back home with his family. And he's got a CPC score of one, that's the best you can get, his life changed that day, but it pretty much changed for good. Okay? These outstanding folks with the help of the equipment we had, in the grace of our good Lord's sake. Brought this family back together. Um, the patient was not able to be here with us tonight due to the variants that's going on right now. So this is who really went out, performed cardiac saving. This gentleman was over the age of sixty, that is unheard of in a rural setting. To have somebody that over age of sixty, to perform nineteen minutes of CPR, bring that patient back, and he leaves the cardiac care center with CP score of one. That's one thing. So when we had our Duke Race Cars trial meeting, we actually presented those boards, they already have them. Um, and we just wanted to bring them here tonight to recognize them. I do thank you so much. After, after all the teams, the staff on, on the hang up. Get the commission, this group, really appreciate what you have to do. I'll take. This time, these angels. Sure, I've got one more presentation. One more, sorry. This is just a list so far, this list is growing every day, this is something that we want to do every time. So again, on June the twenty third, around twelve thirty, our EMS units were dispatched out for chest pain call down towards Lake Gaston. Sixty year old man was having chest pains. Our crews went out. Miss Solomon come on up again because you answered this call again. So Ms. Solomon answered the phone, the gentleman was having chest pains, our crew went out. Well, listen, Fitz come on up. And Sergeant James Potique, he was not here to be here with us tonight. But they actually went out, the patient was having a heart attack. They put our EKG monitor on him and found out that he was having, we call a stink, he was having cardiac episode. They faxed that twelve lead to Duke University Medical Center, they got it on the other end in five minutes. They told them we will send you the helicopter, so they did, they launched their helicopter. Um, Littleton Fire Department actually met them in the landing zone, I could not get to represent us here live with you. But about two minutes out, this fellow went into cardiac arrest. Crew started performing CPR, they performed about five minutes of CPR, they gave him some drugs. And he was actually living when they put him on the helicopter. They sent him to Duke, and there we go again, sixty years older, he come home, eight days from Duke. He had two stents put in, and he had a CPC score of one, so that's two in less than six weeks in Warren County. That's why we want to recognize these folks for their hard work. This time, that's all I've got. Okay, all right. Well, I'm sorry I dropped the gun. But here again, we appreciate all that you all do. And I know the people that were recipients of you all's hard work. Especially appreciative of what you all have done, but as I said before, uh, it's possible we can take a picture with you and you'll bring. People, people, angels that you refer to, it's not every day I get a chance to take a picture with angels, so. You are the boss, so you tell me, if you want to take a picture, we'd be greatly take a picture tonight. I guess you all noticed, uh, we're missing two people here tonight. Specifically, but they, uh, with us, they assume that's, uh, the chair, T Davis, and the county manager. That's a gentleman. I can see him on my screen here, and both of them smiling. So, Mr. Davis, Mr. Jones, uh, if you want to jump in at any time, if I'm doing something I'm not supposed to.
You're doing a fine job, Mr. Chair.
We're moving to the public hearing, and. Is it necessary for us to leave the notice, the public notice? Uh, just nothing. Do you want to give an overview?
Sure, I'll give a, um, a quick overview before you go into the public hearing. So, you know, back in, um, June of two thousand twenty one, the Warren County Board of Commissioners did receive a petition for road improvements in the existing Pleasant Hills subdivision in Carolina. So this is the Nutbush Township in the community of Soul City. The petition was submitted by ninety percent of property owners in this subdivision. And county government is given the right to exercise assessment authority in general statutes, article nine A, special assessments for critical infrastructure needs. Uh, the petition at the time was requesting the county finance a hundred percent of the cost. And then according to state statute, petitions must include a minimum of sixty percent, sixty-six percent of property owners. So and then at your, your last meeting in July, you did pass and accept the resolution, uh, the preliminary assessment resolution to make necessary repairs to Rocky Creek Drive, Crescent Lane, Pine Shadow Lane, Cedar Brook Circle, Nutbush Lane, Sandstone Lane, and Sandy Creek Lane, all included in the existing Pleasant Hills subdivision. And result in that resolution, the following terms were relayed, um, that Warren County would accept the petition submitted for road improvements for the Pleasant Hills subdivision. That Warren County would assess eighty percent of the actual cost of the road improvements to the property owners. So this assessment for road improvements for private roads in the existing Pleasant Hills subdivision would be paid by, uh, property owners in the existing subdivision. And the assessed lots would include lots number one through eighty-three and lots eighty-eight through ninety-one for a total of eighty-seven lots. The special assessment would be levied at an equal rate per lot and would be held in advance without interest for five years. The assessment would be paid back in annual payments over ten years with an annual one percent interest rate. And that each of the owner's allocable shares must be paid by June thirtieth, two thousand thirty-six. Any questions?
At this time. But I guess it actually was the.
All the, all the costs would be assessed back to the property owners with some contribution by the developers. So the county will be assessing eighty percent of the actual costs that are incurred. So the next step in this process went to solicit for an RFP to administer the process.
Questions, sir?
If this is just for your public hearing, you have an item later on agenda.
Question, Davis, in confidence.
No, sir, good to go, Ms. Chair, thank you.
So I'm saying that you pay back over a course of ten years, right? So for instance, if a lot isn't sold or they haven't, if they don't do the continual building of it, does developer pay those assessment calls?
Yes, so the, the assessment is attached to the land, not the property owner. So the assessment will follow the land, so whoever is, the, the assessment will be held in advance, so it won't start until five years from now. And then whoever owns that property, whether it's the developer or whether it's a homeowner, um, will pay for the next ten years on their property taxes. So it, it does follow the land, not the owner. And I do want to add, we do have the developer here this evening in case you have any questions for Mr. White.
I'm glad I didn't, uh, recognize what I asked, again, I apologize. Do you want to make any comments? Mr. Jones, that you have any comments you want to make?
I did not, thank you, that covered it pretty well.
Okay, thanks. All right. If there are any questions or concerns, uh, we close this public hearing at this time. Thank you. Okay, uh, the work that this, we wanted to be regular meeting. Two agenda items that need to be added. Would be, uh, agenda item. Or be one. This, uh, I'm with this guy, it's not my last, I think, exact time. Consider approval of resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of that county to disengage that county from Carco Innovations, L E L slash M C O. And to realign with East Point Urban Services, L E L slash M C O. That's one of them. And then the other would be, uh, consider approval of Warren County plan to disengage from Carco Innovations and join East Point. L E L in the slash M C O. So those are the two, uh, amendments that we need to make for our agenda. So, if there are no questions or concerns, uh, I will get a motion to adopt the suggested agenda. With those two amended. Motion, discussion. Those important motions are. All right. Motion, here.
Conflict of interest disclosure statement. Members of the Warren County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of such conflict. And further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this Board of County Commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board, any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this board today? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in particular matter involved.
To, to, so this is.
We have one, Ryan Hicks.
Um, I'm sorry, we were prompted, it's against. What this is, is an announcement to the public. Where the chief of police in North Island, and he's going to be a candidate for sheriff of Warren County. What they've done is they've approved and installed a camera in the lot, which amounts to spying on America. Have you ever heard of it, or looked into it via the internet? All the things. Uh, it is, it's, it's, to me, it's concerning. Spying on America with support of all our commissioners, which gave a, uh, the chief of police and the sheriff can. Uh, and they just biggest kid, they proud of it, right in the front of the newspaper. Uh, across this county, we've elected people who we consider to be some of the most. By learning, uh, set. And have set wide, and let it take place. Not only that, have you all ever heard the name Pegasus? I can tell you what it is. Pegasus is a spy character. And it is, uh, look, fall out, this is from Washington, uh, Post. This is research that I've watched the post, and I saw signs of this, I've been looking at this for more than seven years. I can tell you what I'm telling you because I live, I've experienced it, it still happens today, and it's been more than seven years. And it looks like the county funds and it supports it by giving the sheriff department God's money. Um, what it is, private spy software sold by NSO. And it's bound on sale on Pegasus, it's engineered and evades to debate, evade defense iPhones and Android devices. And leave few traces of its tracks. One of the reasons why it is very difficult to have a forensic, uh, come and find it on your cell phone, because each time that you shut your cell phone off, it erases tracks. But what this spyware does, it gives them complete access to, to your cell phone, they can turn your cell phone into a twenty-four hours surveillance device in your house. And the United States of America, idiots, fell. Now, the way that the government, the way that sheriff departments have gotten away with it is because in two thousand one, George Bush, a big change, passed the P E C Act. P E C Act was created and assumed specifically to try the prostitution in the United States of America. Everybody that's elected as the county government. Everybody that's elected as the county government or law enforcement have taken the hope to support the Constitution of the United States of America. But what they're doing now is pushing the agenda of Patriot Act, which takes away your constitutional rights. When they built this, this particular, uh, Patriot Act in two thousand one, they had female attorney that worked at Patriot Act, and her sole goal was to eliminate the benefit of civil rights she possibly could. That was her reason for being on their committee, was that they changed it. Now, at the end, what they did was they also gave federal law enforcement the authority to walk in your residence, but spy, who can track the vice, business vice, whatever they want to in your residence as long as you did not go out. But if they knock on your door, you're at home, they have to have a search warrant to enter you. They put it with the idea of making law enforcement, local law enforcement, federal law enforcement, but they don't see local law enforcement does not have that authority. Local law enforcement are doing all of those things. They're going in your house. I know they've been. They track your cell phone. And the problem is that once they put your name on that list, anybody that finds themselves indoctrinated into this whole traumatic. What you're doing is being used as a charm. People who find their names on that list are followed twenty-four seven. They're harassed twenty-four seven. And what happens is the program is, yes.
Can you wrap it up about that?
This program is designed to push people to a break. Whether it be, uh, stressed to bad health, whether they snap, kill, beat, or what happened. There are several cases in this country that have been linked to this program. And I, it's very, it is very difficult for me to stand here and look at you all and see and know that you all have said, oh, that you support the Sheriff Department one hundred percent. And Sheriff Department uses the funds that you all give it to pay overtime to some of the deputies that are pushing this program. And I have actually spoken to deputies that were outside of this county pushing the program.
Mr. Jones, thank you for the time.
Yes, that was it. And just one more comment. Make sure you're getting as close to your mic as possible when you're speaking tonight, all of you. Uh, we are having some issues with the audio. And so to make it easier for the people that are watching, um, the stream, you'll get just as close as you can now. Thank you.
They, they heard you loud and clear.
Okay. All right, uh, before we move on to agenda item, uh, three, uh, let me recognize, uh, two members from the board of education we have, uh, Mrs. White. Thank you all for coming out. Don't take too long. I know you all are hesitant, but, uh, it's okay. Did you all, did you all like to share anything watching this year? Okay. Thank you much. Agenda item three, I will accept motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Motion, discussion. Those important motions are. Those motions, nay. Motion carries. Then the item four. Academy members updates. Jones, are you prepared to proceed?
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair and Chair and Commission. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay. I have a few items for you this evening, and I will get started. The first one is one that I would like to, um, commend you all on. Over the past three years, we have seen our strategic plan evolve. And now we are at the point where we would like for you all to consider by motion, um, adopting this as your strategic plan. And we will continue to evolve this going forward. Um, some of the highlights that you all have in your strategic plan are the vision for Warren County, where Warren County is a diverse, thriving rural community known for our creative and sustainable economic revitalization. We already had our mission in place, um, but we didn't have the accompanying vision as well. And we now have, uh, four substantive goal areas that our activities will focus on to help us achieve our strategic plan. And just to, um, highlight those, they are leadership and governance that looks at, uh, the direction that you all provide for us. It looks at the leadership provided by us as the staff. Uh, we also have county services where we will make sure that our county services are being appropriately focused to provide residents the services that they need. Um, we also have economic and community development so that we don't have economic development at the expense of community development. We have now combined those as well. And then the last one is one that we have talked about, um, uh, for a while. And it's good to see it actually reflected in your strategic plan, and that is agribusiness that, uh, would have us focus a bit on making sure the agricultural, uh, heritage of Warren County is, uh, part of our strategic plan. And the other thing that we would like to bring to your attention is, and we have done this over the past three years. Again, it has evolved to this point. And what we will do is, part of this is every other month at your, um, work sessions, we will provide you with updates so that we don't lose accountability for this plan and make sure that it is a part of our operating activities. All right. So, um, with that said, if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Um, otherwise, um, if you all feel comfortable moving forward with approving it, uh, we'd appreciate that. And this will be a living document. So as we see that our needs change, we will make changes and present those to you as well to move forward.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to the strategic plan?
I have a question. So, Mr. Jones, do we already have money, uh, in our budget to go along with some of the things that we have here in our strategic plan?
Yes, so we tried to, when we went through the budget, make sure that we aligned some of our activities, some of our capital projects, um, all to be reflected in what we came up with, um, for your budget for the current fiscal year. Um, there will still likely be some things that we'll have to focus on. Um, but yes, uh, the budget is aligned, their capital improvement plan is aligned to be supportive of this strategic plan.
Any other questions? Pleasure to. Improve the Warren County's strategic plan.
Mr. Chair, I'm moved that you approved the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four strategic plan laid out in the twelve-month gap plan, Mr. Ben.
You agree to the motion. It's during the discussion. Those important motions are. Motion carries. Jones, you can continue to decide.
Sure. Uh, thank you. That, that was, uh, significant. And in addition to that, we also have an operational work plan, um, by area where we look at different activities that we will be working on to support the strategic plan outside of what you see, see there. So, um, those are two important documents that will be working together. Uh, the next item we have is, uh, a local management entity and managed care organization update. Um, as you know, on June sixteenth, you all established a committee, uh, that was two commissioners and us as staff, uh, the county attorney, uh, myself, the health director and DSS director. And so what we did was we took some time to meet with the LMEs who were interested in, um, supporting Warren County. And, uh, those entities we, uh, met with on July sixth, July seventh, and July thirteenth, just to have more in-depth conversations after their presentations to you on, uh, June sixteenth. And in addition to that, on July twenty-sixth, the state of North Carolina announced that, um, the three companies that we had been speaking with were all vetted and selected to become, uh, tailor pa- plan providers for, uh, um, different regions in the state. And so what that means is these tailored plans are how North Carolina provides behavioral healthcare services, um, to the community. And so individuals who need these services to address serious mental illnesses will be covered, um, under these tailored plans. And they will provide comprehensive services, meaning they will provide physical healthcare as well as behavioral health services, any other long-term care needs, even on down to pharmacy services. And so for the state to select these, um, companies as tailored plans mean that they are providing, uh, these services in a manner, um, that would be beneficial to communities that are in their catchment areas. And so this is a decision of the Board of Commissioners. And we looked at the fact that, um, these organizations, um, who would be more responsive to us likely? Um, um, what are, there's their governance structure look like? So, um, with that said, um, we also, uh, were directed, um, by the committee to come up with some priority questions that we could ask these questions. And we received back a comprehensive response from East Point, um, along with, uh, their governance structure, which would allow us to have a seat on their board, uh, which we don't currently have. Um, they are a smaller organization likely to be, um, more responsive to us and provide a direct line of communication when there are behavioral health needs for Warren County. And they were also selected, um, to be a tailor plan provider. So those, um, um, factors, uh, we wanted to bring to your attention. Um, so you all could consider, um, what you wanted to do as it relates to either staying with our current local management entity or choosing to move on to, uh, another provider. And that concludes my comments.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Jones, any other questions? Want to continue?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, will you speak with me or the county attorney?
I will refer to you, uh, Jones.
Right, I'll ask Mr. Kingsbury to help me, but you, we added two, uh, items, B one and B two. And Mr. Kingsbury can walk you through the procedure for what you all do to consider those items.
Okay, uh, my apologies. I was going to say, yeah, we have invented this with, uh, four B one and four B two.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Before you and the board, you have, um, the first document that needs to be acted upon. It is a resolution to disengage from Cardinal and to realign with East Point. This is the first step as required by law to make that move. And this resolution just needs your approval.
I thought you stopped to go to the head call, but would you finish with four?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The resolution for consideration.
Mr. Chair, I'm moved that you approved the resolution, uh, by the Board of County Commissioners of Warren County to disengage Warren County from Cardinal Innovations L M E M C O and realign with East Point Human Services L M E C O.
Let's go to the top with second. Questions? Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. opposed, nay. Motion carries. They were moved to agenda item two B two.
Yes, sir. Almost got me. It's not gonna stop. Uh, this plan is also required. It is a disengagement plan, uh, disengagement plan from Cardinal in order to move to East Point. Uh, the bulletin item is correct again, and they really tell us what actual repeat will take. Uh, the timeline is getting completed within nine days, but within nine days, there are certain actions. The first one is this resolution, uh, that East Point, East Point's board will vote. Resolution, uh, sets us into their catchment area. And then, uh, counties, county will work with East Point to set up the necessary structures and, uh, Cardinal will work with, uh, these will work with the state's law to make sure all the services that will be provided come into their, uh, service plan. The time dates at the bottom talks about the actions that we think we're gonna have a public hearing and solicit comments from the public and, uh, providers that, uh, I guess Cardinal will have to, they will have to, East Point will have to reach out to them to try to solicit their support to make sure the services are continued. Any questions about the plan?
Questions? Well, I will attend by motion to, to the.
Mr. Chair, I'm moved that you approved the disengagement plan from Cardinal Innovations L M E M C O.
Motion, it's during the discussion. Those important motions are. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Vice Chair.
Jones, I think it's. Back over to you for agenda item four, so personnel updates.
Mr. Jones, can you get his attention for me?
Sure, Mr. Hunt. Mr. Davis would like to say a few words before I continue.
Can I hear you?
Can you hear me?
Hold one minute. Most of you, nod your head if you can hear me. Most gals nod your head if you can hear me. Most gals, if you say something to see if you're coming through.
Sure, test one, test one.
We, we can hear you, proceed.
Okay, Chairman, I mean Vice Chair, Mr. Davis wanted to say a few words after your uh, last discussion and then I will jump back in after Mr. Davis finishes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, can you hear me pretty well?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I would just like to ask the board without, uh, with the approval of, um, consideration that through this transition, that there are a lot of things we have to consider. And um, Mr. Kingsbury will be very much a, a person of, of that can basically handle this for us in this transition. And if the board is okay, we'll allow him to, to, to serve in that role is, as far as being the, um, the lead person on this transition.
Well, taken, uh, we need, we don't need to take action, uh, absolutely. I agree unless. I think all the board members are in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll speak for, we're counting on you. Okay, so, most gals.
Sure, thank you. Uh, I'll go ahead and continue with four C and personnel updates. I just wanted to uh, follow with you all. We mentioned previously that we're working on, we were working on some substantive recruitments for uh, key positions for us. And so, um, I am pleased to announce that Eric Saint Singh, our one of our current public utilities employees will be moving up to director uh, for public utilities and uh, will mean an opportunity for um, some promotions for our existing public utilities staff as well. Um, we are all uh, very close to wrapping up the EMS director recruitment as well, and I hope to have an update for you outside of this meeting as well, but those are two key positions that we will be moving forward with. And so I just wanted to bring those um, to your attention. Any questions? Alright, thank you. Sure, thank you. Last item is four D, uh, the American Rescue Plan update. Um, so this has been uh, an issue that we have been working on for some time now. Uh, the funding for the American Rescue Plan came down a little bit outside of our normal budgeting process. And so we do have to come up with a plan for use of those funds. And I provided you with uh, just a draft plan. Um, this is not for any action this evening. What we'd like to do is have you take some time to take a look at it. Uh, we will bring this back to you at your work session uh, later this month. So we can talk in detail about um, what that plan looks like. Um, there are four key areas or, or five that you really um, can use those funds for. It's, it's a little bit more um, generous in allowing use um, um, than the initial funds we receive, which were a part of the coronavirus relief funds. Um, and so these funds will allow us to assist businesses um, and assist other needs in the community as well. And so you will have um, a corresponding item later on on your agenda where you all actually have to consider a resolution um, as part of what the United States Treasury is requiring before we um, begin to appropriate and use any of these funds. And with that, uh, Vice Chair and Chair, that concludes my report.
Next item that I have, um, is to consider approval of the capital project ordinance for Black County and its part influence in the amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred forty on the source being part of grant. This board is, if the ordinance is just to set that kind of place, uh, for these projects, this is clear.
Sure, uh, Vice Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sure, I will uh, cover this item for you. Um, and item six really is uh, just us seeking some grant funding. It's one of the items that you will also see reflected in the strategic plan. Uh, we are seeking funding which would allow us to um, have our water system, have a program that allows us to identify all of our assets. Um, it'll also allow us to build, uh, build out a GIS map of our water assets. And then that will allow us to move forward with figuring out what our plan looks like for system rebet, rebuild and properly planning for our long-term capital needs. Um, and part of the funding requirement is that you all approve a resolution and so that resolution is before you this evening.
The, the, this man, the man threw me off. I kept saying, I know that gentleman back there, but I just kept, yeah, there you go.
Hi, well, good evening. Um, let's be here with y'all tonight. The reason that, uh, y'all, y'all know who I am. My name's Matthew Place, I'm ag agent here in Warren County. Uh, I'm sort of the overseer for Bonter Act District, work with, what Bonter Act District is is through the Bonfire Preservation Act of North Carolina. In the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, as well as it's, it's legislated through the general center of North Carolina. What it is, is the Bonfire Preservation Act. It also gives you, they, they can stand on, it doesn't protect your footing. But if any nuisance plant grow about inches, um, about inches of the farm, but you have some sort of protection. Because when you put your land in the district, you want to be noted, it, it, private search stuff done. Uh, and that, round your farm, that this land is within a one and a half mile of your property line, there to be notified that it's working farm, which may have sights, sounds, smells, and uh, or they'll, once they cultivate produce, they'll block it, they, they'll know it happened. They can't say they didn't know this was a farm, was the farm. The revisions, uh, we, as the board, they met and they we revised and rewrote new ordinance that there's new applications due to the fact that, um, the land, most of it's little over six yards, like it's in Warren County, this involved in Bonter Act District. Uh, when the original applications, uh, written, there's never a conservation agreement put in there. Conservation agreement states is, that within the voluntary district, it's, it's reviewed every ten years automatically. But in a conservation agreement, you, you sign off, it's, it's binding, it's binding by point you and the county, as well as the state, that you would not develop that land in any other ways that may occur for use for ten years. If you do decide you want to develop it, you, you get thirty days, thirty day time period, you're up to the board. But due to the fact that conservation agreement, that was failed, we put in the ordinance, we made the applications. All land involved is sent to the board. So we went through it, redid the applications and also included, um, we also have option now at the ordinance, if it is accepted, um, to have an enhanced Bonter Act District, which is an irrevocable period of ten years. Uh, once you put your land in there, you have to you, like I said, it's irrevocable for ten years to be an agricultural district and that includes, um, includes it, it goes with the land, whether or not it's sold, or whether the owner is deceased. Uh, but after ten years, you have to re-enroll. But that's the main reason we rewrote the ordinance. Mr. Kingsbury has already looked over and given his opinion, make sure I make sure I can type right and put everything in there as well, should. Uh, but that's all I have for you tonight.
Most places, it's our last stock agent, is that correct? Anthem project, okay. And I just mentioned that because you know agriculture is one of the I just teach things that we want to do. Yeah, yeah, okay, alright, I just just want you to know you might be getting a lot of calls. I know, I know you right to the check, okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board in regards to this? Motion, discussion? Those important motions, aye. As opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move to agenda item eight.
Sure, so the first thing that I have for you this evening is to consider the approval of the purchase of Open Gov online permitting software. Uh, the, the community and economic development department, we have been working in partnership with environmental health and our IT department to identify a solution to advancing the permitting process in both environmental health zoning and code enforcement. So some of our major goals that we're hoping to achieve in this process include the ease of access to, to the permitting process, not just for out-of-town contractors, but also folks in town, um, and homeowners as well, looking at a improving our efficiency of services, looking at how to maintain a continuity of services as well as streamlining project management. And of course, um, a goal of the county has been to be able to accept online payments as well. So all these things will be able to happen through this program. After a view of various products on the market, the team unanimously agreed that Open Gov would best serve the needs of uh, the environmental health zoning and code enforcement. And so this product will take approximately sixty days to build out, train our staff and fully implement for public use. So we're hoping uh, for implementation in October. The one-time fee, this, this includes product configuration, setup and training. And I believe there's a scope of work that was attached in your original, in your agenda packet, um, a, and that is twenty-four thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. And then the annual, there's an annual software services fee of twenty-nine thousand three hundred. And so this will be a cost share between planning and the health department. And there is money in our FY twenty-two budget for this. So on behalf of, um, the planning and zoning director out of community and economic development, the director of public health, the environmental health supervisor, we are recommending to you that we move forward with the Open Gov program in the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand ninety dollars for this first year and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreements. Twenty-nine thousand three hundred, that's the annual. So the, that additional charge for the first year is building out the program, building out our forums, our dashboard, all the stuff that will work from the back end, building up the platform, training the staff for that, getting us fully up and running. And then it's an annual B S M.
Motion, is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of the motions, aye. As opposed, nay.
And so the second item that I have for you this evening is to consider the approval of the final assessment resolution for the Pleasant Hills subdivision. This is the next step in the process after you receive the petition. And of course, you passed your preliminary assessment resolution. Tonight, you had your public hearing. And so in order to proceed, if, if you choose to do so for this assessment process, you do have to approve the final assessment resolution for the Pleasant Hills, um, subdivision, that the road improvements for that process.
And so, and I would just add to, you'll see my recommendation that the Warren County Economic Development Commission Board did unanimously vote at their June 2021 meeting to recommend to this governing board to support the special assessment process for these road improvements in the existing Pleasant Hills subdivision. And I bring you that recommendation as well to approve this final assessment resolution.
I want to turn the motion at this time to approve the final assessment resolution. You heard motion and discussion. All those in favor of the aye. Aye. Motion chair.
Great, thank you. And the last item that I have, HC, is to consider the approval of the submission for the Warren County Fund Grant Application. And this does include a local grant match. So according to the Warren County Grants Policy, if a grant is over a certain amount, and especially if there's a match over a certain percentage, this board does have to approve us making that application. So as you know, we have been working with our local existing industry, Glenn Raven, on their expansion project at the Norlina plant that will create 205 jobs and will be an $82 million capital investment. So in part of that incentive from the state of North Carolina, the Department of Commerce has agreed to award a $1 million, Warren County Fund Grant to Glenn Raven for this expansion. And you have some information, you know, about this grant in your memo. But it is a performance-based grant, so they will have to complete the jobs. They will have to make the investment and meet those milestones. We are, as a T.O. one county, local governments must provide no less than $1 for every $3. You of course have definitely done that and met that in your local incentive agreement that you passed at the public hearing for project, yep. So this is not an additional local match. This is already included in that incentive in those grants that we awarded. So the Warren County Community and Economic Development Director, I recommend that you apply for this grant on behalf of Glenn Raven and make that local match of up to $334,000. Any questions?
Based on what you were saying, there is no additional funds required from the county because we've already, we must approve.
Yeah, it will, you know, you approve 10 annual grants of 60% of their tax liability. And so this will just come from that, so it won't be paid out directly. It won't be a separate payout, it'll be considered a part of the match for this grant.
What's the pleasure of the board? You heard motion and discussion. Those what the motion said aye. So the goal is made. Motion chair. Why, look, the big thanks. That was actually, there had been the item before that, but I'm left to comment for the galway. Appreciate you considering. Again, the item, now, it's, it's going to increase the agency more from $3 to $5. That's not a question. Is there a question? Because this request of the state, or there was a hope to free the membership three. Would the state pass you and allow the board a, well, full in. What's the pleasure of the board? You heard motion, is there any discussion?
I do have a question and understand you can do it, I just want to go back on why, why is the question coming?
I think one of the concerns has to do with some of the members have to be frequently in the same place and different people. And this is kind of together, they want to get, they want to pay above the posting. Concerning my discussing public business, doing business. And also, it doesn't need to change. People appointed third. We're having it several.
The motion, so aye. And the goal is made. Motion chair. Okay, we have the item 10. Who are the applications for front jobs, do that, emergency, ambulance service, cooperation.
Is there, is there someone from EMS there? Can you hear me?
Chris, I think you're supposed to see. Captain Tucker is here. Missions, do you want him to speak to this issue or would you?
Sure, I can say a few words, but Captain Tucker, I prefer if he'd like to come up as well. This is just the second part of what you all received. You received the application from Bertie Ambulance. And as I mentioned at that meeting, you had 30 days to review it. Your next meeting is beyond the 30 days. And so EMS staff has reviewed the application. They've discussed it with our medical director and have recommended that we approve the franchise. There should have been a memo, I'm not sure if you all have it. And so I apologize if you do not, but that's what we have. Mr. Tucker.
Do y'all have any questions about the contract, the inside contract? Just a little history, Bertie has been helping with us for years. So far as our staff at EMS, we recommend you that y'all support this. Medical director for the county, he is on board with it, all the paperwork. They are actually operating in the county name. So if you have any questions and entertain, also they'll provide a written service that really helps us out a lot, the common blessings I know, that takes the burden off of us a lot. Question would be hang, I'll find my question.
Thank you all for the excellent presentation at the last meeting. If you're not sent to that, this is it for the program. If you are having a question. For Mr. Tucker. Well, if it's time I'm going to turn the motion for approval, without to vote here.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to approve the application to the county agreement of Bertie in this town.
You heard motion and discussion. Those what the motion said aye. Aye. Motion chair. Thank you. We'll move to the item 10. We can't provision a update. And.
Okay.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Before I start my, my update, I want to, I want to make sure that the public can hear me, am I coming in loud and clear?
I assume so, yes.
Okay, all right, so the reason why my request is that is because, you know, this board always works in, is just embodied in integrity in what we do. My comments is actually directed to the public in regards to how their Board of Commissioners and administrative staff has dealing to work to ensure that we are doing things decent and in order. A, I guess more than maybe a month or so ago, we received a email from the State Auditor's Office of a complaint of wrongdoing by the Warren County Board of, of, the entire board and administrative staff. So we went through a audit process. Myself, Mr. Jones, and the Auditor's Office, which was the watchdog Auditor's Office part of it. But in a way, they, they came down and they reviewed a lot of our information. And it was a complaint that was brought in against the board and administrative staff that there was some wrongdoing when it comes to certain travel expenses and things of that such. So of course, we had nothing to hide. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is plus it's very important that the, the community know and the citizens know that we are doing things in order. And we will continue to do those things in order. We came back with, and Mr. Jones, I'm gonna let Mr. Jones chime in here in just a few minutes. But the Audit Office came back and told us that there were no wrongdoings. Everything was decent and in order. Which we, which we expected to be. We had gave them full access to all our files through the Finance Department and other files that they requested. And Mr. Jones and his staff ensured that they had access to everything that they wanted to have access to and review it in regards to us. And like I said, there was no wrongdoings found. We came back with a good bill of health. We sent them our policy and other documents, and there was nothing found. I keep saying that because I want to drive that point home to the public that we are working with integrity here, we will continue to do it. And I said before, I will always defend the integrity of the Warren County Board of Commissioners because that's where we have to govern and make sure that the citizens trust what we are doing. So I will stop right there and let Mr. Jones take the rest of that, and then I'll be done with my comments after one other coming after that, if you don't mind.
Sure, thank you, Chair, and thank you for reminding me. I had it on my list and it just slipped by me. And so you are correct, we received the notice. They requested that we keep it confidential. We gave them complete access to our records, travel records. And they did not find that there were any discrepancies in our records. And so I do need to not only thank the board, but our staff as well, our finance and administrative staff. They are responsible for making sure that those records are kept in good order, and they were. And so we appreciate that. And I think it is important that we let the, the public know that we are doing things correctly here in the course of our business.
So thanks, thank you again, Mr. Jones and your staff, and definitely the Board of Commissioners because, you know, we put things in place to make sure that things are up and up and up, and I do appreciate it. My last comment is, I just want to thank Commissioner Hunt for taking over tonight's board meeting for me. He knows the details while I'm not there, and of course, many of you all do. But it's good to see everyone, thank you for all the hard work, and y'all take care. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Okay, my pleasure, appreciate you giving that opportunity to practice my skills again. I was getting a little. But thank you. I, I don't have any comments at this time or any updates. Appreciate you all being here, not physically, but the Zoom and spiritually. So it was good that you all could participate. So if there are no other comments or concerns, questions, or whatever, we will proceed to agenda item, well, if my understanding, we don't necessarily do it eleven times. Okay. Taking the motion to a adjourn.
But Chair, I moved it to be during tomorrow's August circuit, board meetings.
You heard motion. I want to say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn at the office stage is seven twenty-five.
I, I hear you, Mr. Hunt, I truly understand, you did a fine job, better than me.
Thank you all for coming down tonight.
All right, take care.